...as well. Also want to extend a congratulations to Councilman Borzjakowski on his retirement from Peerless Chain after forty-plus years, as well as Saturday night receiving the honors of being the Polish Person of the Year, which was a well-attended and very nice event, and well-deserved too, George.
Thank you very much.
And also want to mention that the mayoral bike ride that was scheduled for Wednesday night has been rescheduled for May 21st at 5:00 in front of City Hall. Wednesday's weather is 100% rain and 43 degrees, and I don't think anybody, including the mayor, wants to go for a six-mile bike ride that night, so I think it was a good decision.
We follow your lead, Jerome.
A good decision. Well, Stephen and I would have gone, but also have a couple of proclamations. One, following the announcement about the bike ride, is whereas the bicycle is an economical, healthy, convenient, and environmentally sound form of transportation, and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Winona's scenic beauty, and whereas throughout the month of May, the residents of Winona and its visitors will experience the joys of bicycling through educational programs, races, commuting events, charity events, or by simply getting out and going for a ride, and whereas Winona's road and trail system attracts bicyclists each year, providing economic health, transportation, tourism, and scenic benefits, and whereas creating a bicycle-friendly community has been shown to improve citizens' health, well-being, and quality of life, growing the economy, attracting tourism dollars, improving traffic safety, supporting student learning outcomes, and reducing pollution, congestion, and wear and tear on our streets and roads, and whereas Bike Month Winona, the league of American bicyclists, schools, city departments, hospitals, companies, and civic groups will be promoting bicycling during the month of May 2019, and whereas these groups are also promoting greater public awareness of bicycle operation and safety education in an effort to reduce collisions, injuries, and fatalities, and improve health and safety for everyone on the road. Now therefore, I'm Mayor Mark Peterson hereby proclaim May 2019 as Bike Month in the City of Winona. Another proclamation has to do with Law Enforcement Memorial Day, whereas the 15th of May 2019 is designated as Winona County Law Enforcement Memorial Day, and is set aside as a day to honor all fallen law enforcement officers, and whereas the well-being of all citizens of Winona County and the United States is preserved and enhanced as a direct result of the vigilance and dedication of law enforcement personnel, whereas more than 700,000 men and women at great risk to their personal safety presently serve their fellow citizens as guardians of peace, and whereas more than 135 peace officers across this nation were killed in the line of duty during 2017, and whereas all Winona-area law enforcement agencies use this day to honor our fallen fellow officers who have made the supreme sacrifice for the citizens of Winona County and the City of Winona, and whereas this day also serves as a reminder of the dangers faced currently serving law enforcement officers in their day-to-day activities, and whereas our officers do not serve in a vacuum, but are assisted in many ways by the citizens of Winona and Winona County. Now therefore, I'm Mayor Mark Peterson hereby proclaim Thursday, May 15, 2019, as Winona County Law Enforcement Memorial Day in the City of Winona, and call upon all residents to join area law enforcement agencies in honoring our fallen officers. And now, I guess I would like to invite Mr. Joe Lepley up, who would like to, I think, present a gift from our sister city in Misato, Japan.
Well, I'll wait on the gift until the ambassadors sitting in the back row say a few words about their trip. And I didn't tell them this in an email, but being an ambassador is always trying to do and react to the unexpected, so we'll see if you can come up and remember how to introduce yourself in Japanese. Which one would you like to serve? All right, Nico, bring your gift with you, please. And then Ruby, you'll be next. Suzanne. Ava. Yeah. Owen. All of the students that we took, all 25 of them and the 10 adults, they all conducted themselves as good ambassadors, and not only did they make Winona proud, but Minnesota and the United States.
Hajimemashite. Watashi no name wa Nico desu. Dozo yoroshiku. Hello, my name is Nico Stern. It's nice to meet all of you. I know I know a couple of you. So I was one of the ambassadors chosen to represent Winona, Minnesota, and the United States when we traveled to Japan a couple of weeks ago, and today I'm going to share a couple of stories with you that I experienced in Japan. The first experience that I'd love to share with you is my experience with my Japanese homestay. The first thing I noticed when I arrived at my homestay was that the home was simple. It had an open floor plan, and on the floors were rice mats called tatami. The next thing I noticed was at dinner, and it was that they made amazing food, absolutely fantastic food. The next day, we traveled to Sakura Hill. Sakura means cherry blossom in Japanese, where we saw some beautiful flowers, and I got to experience Misato sledding, which is consists of sliding down a brass hill on a cardboard rectangle. Very fun. Another thing that I experienced while on my homestay was a professional baseball game in the capital of Miyagi Prefecture, Sendai. One of the things that really struck me when I went to the baseball game was how clean the stadium was. I was wondering about it, and then after the game, I realized that it was so clean because everybody picked up the area around them for any garbage and scraps left behind by them and everyone surrounding them. The second thing that I would like to share with you is my experience on the bullet train, or shin konsein in Japanese. We went to the train station, which was in Sendai, which is the capital of Miyagi Prefecture in Japan, and the first train that we saw was on its slow speed, which, for comparative purposes, is around the speed of your typical American Amtrak. The next train that came by was on fast speed, which is so fast, nearly knocked me off my feet. The next train, the third train that I saw, was the train that we were going to board. And the first thing that I noticed as I boarded was that the train looked remarkably like an airplane, with compartments above your seat and everything. The train ride was very fast, as I think 15 minutes, because we were going very quickly in the train. The third and last experience I would like to share with you is my experience at the Japanese school. When I walked into the classroom, I realized that it was laid out like an American school with desks and a chalkboard in front. The uniform for homeroom was a nice suit, and the uniform for the rest of the day was sweatpants and like a sweat and like an athletic coat. There were four periods, and then lunch, which was similarly delicious as the home cooking. The students served their peers' lunch, and for lunch that day was Japanese chicken curry. As I was walking out of the school day, which ended at 5:00, I took some time and noticed how beautiful the gardens were outside the school. They had cherry trees and lots of shrubbery, and it was very beautiful. So as I'm concluding my little spiel, I would like to say that I wholeheartedly recommend the trip, because for me, I really feel like it diversified my knowledge of the world, and gave me and grew my confidence, because I've traveled across the world without my parents. And I'd also like to say that it was an all-around good experience. I'd like to thank the council members for their support and for their time tonight, and I'd like you all to have a wonderful rest of your week.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job, Nico.
Ruby heads this. Dozo yoroshiku. I would make this a lot shorter than Nico. So he talked about Misato and homestays more, but we first arrived in Tokyo, which I expected to be like Minneapolis or like a city in New York, but it really wasn't. It actually seemed more rural than a big city, but we didn't see downtown. And then when we got to Misato, which was about six hours, the first day, they had this huge welcoming, which was, and that blew my mind, but we got to the City Hall, and they had all these people lined up, and they had these kindergartners, and they had all this, all this stuff prepared for us, and I thought that was really nice, and I hope we can do something like that a bit more. And we went in, I made actually a speech in City Hall, and I'm glad I did that, because it really helps with speeches and that stuff. So I'm glad I did that. And when we met the homestays, that was one of the best things to thank, because I made so many more friendships, because when they came here, I didn't make as many as I when I went over there, because they had so many people, and they were just so open about everything. And when I went to their school, I was the only one in their class, and they made a huge deal out of us, and I'm really glad they did that. So if you haven't gone, I hope you do at some point, because it was such a good experience, and I thank you for supporting the trip.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Ava does this. Dozo yoroshiku. I'd first like to say thank you so much to everyone that supported the trip and provided the opportunity for me to go. It was pretty much the highlight of my whole life, and I could not imagine like not having going. My favorite experience was when we went to the cultural fair, and we, Ruby helped me with this too, we created paper flowers, and we helped all the little girls there put them into their hair, and then we all had a dance party and danced with all of them, and it was just the best experience ever, and just thank you so much.
I was a parent shepherd on the trip, and I already forgot how to do this. I did do a speech in Japanese in front of one of the high schools, so I did my time in front of 500-plus people. I did Japanese. And I don't know how much more I can say. Nico and Ruby and Ava did a great job, but from an adult standpoint, watching your child and their friends go through this experience was wonderful. And then on a personal note, just to meet all of previous, like we've hosted twice, and to finally meet some of the parents of the kids that we've had there, and then just everybody else was so friendly, always asking to come back, always wanting to know more about you and what you do and what Winona is all about. So on a personal note, it was wonderful for me to experience, but then on top of it, to experience that with your child was wonderful. So thank you all for supporting this initiative, and I hope it continues on indefinitely. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Doolan Peggy does. Dozo yoroshiku. I'm Peggy Doolan. I was also a parent on this trip, and it was, like Chris was saying, a great experience to experience with your child. The similarities, kids are kids, so at the cultural fair, the dancing, they sing, they dance to the same music our kids do, similarities, and then the differences of the dress code or after school, these kids have mandatory clothes. Nico said that school went till 5:00. After school, they have a mandatory clothes. Pigeon jacka, brass band, softball, sumo wrestling, what's named in the logo, the big one.
Dando.
Dando. Caneared cows, growing plants, all these different things, and for our kids to go to school with them and live with them was such a good experience to see that these kids are very similar, but here are some different things that happen in their culture, and I'm very grateful that my daughter was able to go, and more grateful that she allowed me to apply to go with her, because I wasn't sure she was going to let me. But thank you very much for supporting this trip, and I hope to continue welcoming those from Misato here into the Winona area.
Thank you.
Watashi wa no name wa Doolan Suzanne desu. Dozo yoroshiku. Hello, my name is Suzanne Doolan. Nice to meet you. I don't really have much to say today, other than it was a wonderful experience that I will probably never forget, and will always remember, and thank you for supporting us.
Thank you.
Now, I know you've got some large gifts in the past, so I did request a smaller one since you're starting to run out of space.
It's a good idea. It was getting pretty full. Thank you, Joel.
Yeah.
Thanks, Joel.
This was made by Serena Ito's grandmother, who's 80 years old, and somebody tried to tell me that it took 80 days to make, and I asked Serena, and she said, oh no, it just took a week. It is in a Japanese tradition.
Took a week to wrap it. They're always so nicely wrapped. I'm just going to get to destroy the wrapping. More marshmallows. Stand of some sort. Amazing.
Wow.
Yeah, nice. There's something else in here too, I think. Probably a platform for it.
Yes.
Well, thank you very much, and this really is one of my favorite council meetings of the year, when I get to hear the students come back from Misato and hear their stories and their enthusiasm for their trip. I mean, it's really quite remarkable, how life-changing this is.
They'd like to have their picture taken with you and a gift.
Okay. Need the gift.
You can come on now. They know who you are. They know who you are. You can't not be there.
Should I sit, or?
Should I sit? There's a box.
All right. George, go sit.
Hang on, I'm going to sit.
Okay.
He said to sit, so.
Sit, George.
Sit, sit. Down boy, huh?
Okay?
All right.
Wait, Steve's got one.
Oops. Okay. And I want to say just a huge thank you to Joe Lepley too, for all that you've done over the years to build this program and your efforts to get these kids there and get them all back safely. A majority of the council, I think, have all been to Misato, and we can certainly understand the enthusiasm these students have for having visited, so thank you for everything you've done.
Well, we almost lost two.
We don't want to hear about that.
Save that for the next meeting.
Well, thank you again. And that's all I have. Considerable. Your manager?
Just want to say for those who celebrate, I hope folks have a blessed Ramadan this month. Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Idan. Borzjakowski.
Here.
And Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1, a reappointment to the Fine Arts Commission of Rebecca Sims.
Move to approve that.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Eileen.
It's been a long night.
I gotta get going here. Any questions or anything? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
Item 3.2 is a request for an off-site permit for lawful gambling for the Redmonds to be used at Lake Park Drive on July 21st.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
Item 3.3 is an application for an on-sale wine license for Rivers Hotel Company.
So moved.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Is that you, Paul?
No, George.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
Item 3.4 is a request for a temporary on-sale wine and malt liquor license for St. Mary's for their homecoming on June 22nd.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
Item 3.5 is a request to close Deborah Ave for a block party on Sunday, May 19th.
Move to approve.
Motion by Paul, this is a second.
Second.
Seconded by Eileen. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
Item 3.6 is caroling by candlelight for Friday, December 6th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Eileen, and a seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
Item 3.7 is Katie's Place Street closure request for Saturday, May 18th.
Move to approve the request.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
Item 3.8 is a request to close Johnson Street for a neighborhood party on Sunday, May 19th.
Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried?
Item 3.9 is a request from Steamboat Days Festival to amend their license agreement with the announcement that the Budweiser Clydesdales are coming, and I believe the request is to use the portion of Municipal Parking Lot Number 1, the easternly third of that lot, early. The request is for Friday, June 7th.
I move to approve that request.
No, I think they want to amend the amendment.
Oh, you want to amend the amendment.
I want to amend the amendment.
Okay. I'm pretty sure we'll be okay with this.
I'm Fred Manning, president of Steamboat Days, and I was here a couple of weeks ago, and you're not getting another plaque, you already got one. But just last week, we got information that Budweiser Clydesdales are coming to Steamboat Days, and we've been trying to get them for 10 years to come back. They, as you probably heard, they're down to two hitches, and they're both in St. Louis. They used to have hitches on the East Coast and the West Coast, and they're only doing major events. Not to say that Steamboat Days is a major event, but they always, because they canceled out about 10 years ago coming up here, so they figured that they were going to give us one. Well, short notice, we couldn't find a tent. Well, we finally found one today that's going to work for the horses, and we want to take a third of Lot Number 1, the east third of it, up against Stacy Mouse's building. The other two-thirds will be carnival as we got the city agreement. But they, the only way we can get the tent is if they come in on the 6th of June and put it in. So we'd have to close the street and market, or close the lot and market on the 5th. They won't be able to come in and take the tent out until the 17th or 18th. So I want to amend the agreement to leave that tent up from June 6th to June 18th, and then we'll take it down. That's the only way the tent company will work for us. So we will, well, we hope that we can get that amended, so that we can get that tent and leave it up. The other two-thirds of the lot will be open for parking at regular times, except during Steamboat Days, which shows in the agreement. The Clydesdales are coming in on Monday, the 10th, so they will set up then on Monday and Tuesday, and then they'll show Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. They'll be open down there from 10:00 in the morning, or excuse me, from 4:00 until 10:00 at night, Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday. Saturday, they'll be open at 11:00 to 10:00, where the cars showing for viewing down there. They, Sunday will be from 3:00 to 10:00. Now, they not only just show down there, they put the hitches together, and they run all over town, they went to the hospital and everything else, sour, and let the people see the horses and stuff. So again, I'm asking for an amendment to our city agreement to leave that tent up for 12 days.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Michelle, and a seconded by Eileen. Any, Paul?
Two questions, Fred. Have you talked to the business owners, Molson, the other business owners there that use that lot to get their feedback?
Well, we've talked to all the business owners for, during Steamboat Days, from that Sunday through the following Monday, which would be eight, nine days, but we have not mentioned the Clydesdales, which is just too new for us. Everything's been happening so fast to get the tent and stuff.
Will they be in the parade on Sunday?
Yes, they will. And I think this is a big draw for Winona, you know, to get it down here, because like I said, we'll probably never, ever get them again, because they go to just major events now, like the Indianapolis 500 and things like that. So Winona's a small town, and we get the Clydes, and I think it's going to be a good show piece for Winona, draw a lot of people in to see them. Last time we, it was packed, so.
Eileen, you have a question?
I'm assuming this is the case, but the handlers that come with them, is there waste pickup that's happening as they're touring the city?
Oh, yeah. They, they don't do their doo-doo when they're running.
I figured, but I just wanted to ask.
They're trained, and I don't know if they got bags on them or what, but yeah, they're same with the parade and stuff, they don't allow any doo-doo in the parade, so there's got to be cleanup for the horses.
Yeah. I'm assuming all the other requirements with the previous agreement for the Clydesdales would apply, that would be, you know, repair of surface, parking lots, and things like that?
Yeah, we, they have, the tent company will plug the holes for us. We don't have to have the city do it this time. We paid three months for each hole, and that's part of the contract with the tent company. So that lot will be taken care of when they leave, if you'd like. And we also, we'll make sure, we have good pickup, but believe it or not, Maynard wants the doo-doo for the yard, so.
I believe it.
He's going to bring his trailer down.
How big a trailer?
It would be a big trailer.
They're big horses.
He would have been here tonight, but he's got kidney stones again.
Any other questions for Fred? You have a motion. Are we ready to vote? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
You got it. Thank you for all you're doing.
Item 3.10 is a Wabashas Street closure request for the East End Neighborhood Watch Group for the new Sobieski Park Lodge opening.
Move to approve that request.
All right, a motion by George, seconded by Paul. Chad, you wanted to say something.
Mayor and council, I just wanted to add that, starting tomorrow, if individuals are interested in reserving the lodge, they can call our office and check over the phone for open dates. If they actually want to reserve the facility, they need to come in and do our normal looking procedure, which means you need to pay in advance to reserve. So the lodge is very near completion, obviously. We aren't closing out the project yet, but obviously it's in good shape for rentals, and that's exactly what we're looking forward to doing and showcasing this then again to the public on Sunday, June 2nd.
I think if you're hanging pictures, you must be getting pretty close to the end, so it's a great project.
Well, now who's playing baseball? Now, who's playing baseball?
Mayor and council, the Chiefs have a doubleheader that day on the Sunday, the 2nd. So we'll hope for good weather. And again, that'll be a nice, I guess, causeway between the park and the lodge.
And food trucks?
At this event, there will not, because the East End Neighborhood Watch Group will be serving some light refreshments.
George?
What's that phone number that you can call?
They can call our office tomorrow, starting at 8 a.m. It's 457-8258.
Retirement party or something?
I was just gonna say that.
All right.
I'll need it for this Saturday.
There's a motion.
We're ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.11 is a request for a 5K for the Gavin Flying Forest here on Saturday, June 29th at Levy Park.
Move to approve that request?
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Discussion?
Al? You know, I support the concept of this, and it's obviously a good cause and a well-thought-out event. I guess in general, for those that request us to close streets, I would like to suggest that perhaps staff can come up with a way to notify the public in advance that there will be street closures on a certain date between certain hours prior to the event, so they can then, as they use those streets, especially Second Street in this case, that they can realize that on a certain date between certain hours, this street is going to be closed, so they can perhaps plan ahead. I think sometimes in highway projects, they'll do that, you know, beginning, well, they actually do for the bridge, obviously, but it would be nice at least to let people know a few days or so in advance. And this is not just in this case, but as I was reading the route, I thought, you know, we should really do that with this, or we've got the Tri-Nona coming up. You know, those would be, Monica's already ahead of me, right?
So for both Tri-Nona and Steamboat Days 5Ks, we do send notices to all of the property owners on the street that is affected by the street closure, but not, you know, the general public.
This would be a sign or something on that particular street in the boulevard that would advise people of the event and the hours of the event and the dates that they have the event on. Obviously, that's maybe too late to do that now, but as I say, as I was reading this and the Tri-Nona and all the Steamboat Days that we have going on, it's a wonderful way to celebrate our community, but, you know, let's help those that perhaps don't participate know that that street might be closed during a certain particular time period on a certain day. This is a, you know, as I say, I support this, but just a suggestion for future events. I'm seeing heads nod over there at the staff tables, so, you know, be accepted with enthusiasm.
All right.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.12 is a request for the Winona International Sprint Triathlon, known as Tri-Nona, to be held on Sunday, June 9th.
I make a motion to approve the...
Second.
Sorry.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. I see Scott is here. Anything you want to add?
Al, Mayor and council, thank you very much. My wife and I are gonna run Tri-Nona in our second year. Al, to touch on your point, we have always mailed out letters to everybody on the boards. This year, we're making a few changes as well. We're gonna be putting a signage on Gervin Banks Road a week prior, just to notify people going up and down that, oh, yeah, that will be happening on that Sunday morning. It was also suggested at the city staff department head meeting that we had this past week that potentially I should take out some ads in the papers to let the general public know that we will be hosting the Tri-Nona, and then also it gives me an opportunity to recruit volunteers and spectators. So, really want to thank everybody on the council, city staff especially, for all of our work that they put into getting this license agreement together. It's a great event for the community, I believe, and it's part of the reason why Lindsay had to get over. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you. Al?
Quick question, does the construction of the Huff 61 intersection, I'm sure you already thought about that?
We are, we have been in communication with engineering, a little part of Brad, on that, on that avenue in every yard. Right now, it's something like it will not affect us at all, depending on weather. The worst-case scenario is the street will be milled at that point. We would still be able to race on it, we would just have to modify the resources of that rough surface if that were to be happening during the weekend of the event.
Any other questions? Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 3.13 is a road use agreement for Riverview Drive and Thoyer Boulevard. This is for Central Oceans USA to transport 400 windmill blades during the timeframe of May through September.
Make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
I'll second it. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. Any discussion? Al?
This is really 400. Okay. I'm just clarifying the number, because they're coming up on barge, I assume, and then going to be stored in the west part of that area around Badger Equipment and that area. It's quite the under, it's kind of fun to see it, really.
I agree. One of the central locations.
Oh, okay.
I'm curious, I have a question. Yeah, it's between...
And could you identify your south facing?
Yeah, thousand silvers on the central locations. And we think, we don't know the exact number of blades, it depends on the mix. They get, some of them run by truck, some of these projects, some run by barge. And right now, I think it's about 450, but it could go up and do go down a little bit. So it's gonna be in that range, so that's what we expect.
And I see your company's been around since 2011, so.
Yeah.
You've had a lot of experience in this kind of logistics work.
Yeah, we moved, we moved as far back as 2011, we moved over 1,000 towers per G into Iowa for a lot of wind projects there. We've done projects in Brazil, projects on east coast, we've done projects on west coast, we've done projects all over. So we're very familiar with that area.
And moving the cargo from one place to another, obviously.
These blades are all gonna end up here in Minnesota?
They're going to Dakotas. So this is sort of a central staging area, you know, we want to use the river, we want to use the barge system to move them, both for cost reasons, but also because next year, because of the tax credit from Wind Energy, there's a lot, there are a lot of them. So trucking capacity is really stressed, and also with truck driver shortages and trucking shortages now because of electronic logs and other factors, you know, where they don't have capacity to move all these blades. So people are trying to build these projects before the tax credits expire. So that's why, you know, we had to look for alternative means such as barge and look for that for some of these projects.
Paul?
So I'm curious, two things. So there are two images in our packet, one shows going westbound on Thoyer Boulevard, one shows coming eastbound and exiting out onto 14.
That's correct.
Does that, is the ladder, does that mean when they're on their way to be delivered? Are you gonna be going to I-90 or up 14? What's your...
I'm not sure which way those are gonna go. Our company doesn't handle that scope. Our scope ends at load out the truck in our yard. We talked with, you know, with you guys about the outbound, just to make sure we have, you know, path out, we want you to be aware of as much as possible. But the trucking companies that are handling outbound blades, once it, basically, once they go right on Pelzer there, you know, at the intersection, you know, past Fasinal, there, it depends where they're going. I guess that's on which project they're going to, which truck they're gonna take. I don't, I don't have that information portionally.
Okay. And they're all coming by barge? How many shipments are you expecting? How many barge shipments?
So we have six, we have six on a barge. It depends, it's, it's, it's something we will work on too. So there are two different configurations for the barges. We have one configuration that has nine blades on barge, and we have one configuration that has only six. Most of them will come six to a barge, and they're coming in tows of about 10. And obviously, we can't, we can't depart after about the first week of October because of the river closing down, so that's gonna be sort of a cutoff for these, that's the latest they're gonna, they're gonna come, you know, come up. So I think the latest they'll be here is November timeframe, and we hope they'll all be out by the end of the, in terms of leaving the yard, Brian will be out by the end of the year. And speaking of the yard, it's over near, it's Steve Conner's property, it's near the airport, it's on the, it's past the airport.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Or, Eileen?
So I noticed it said traffic gets stopped for about five minutes or so. Is there any, what sort of warning is, you know, transmitted to drivers and...
So, so there are a couple of different things that we do. So there's, there, first off, when these, when these trucks transit, they're gonna have, it's required to have, but a state permit is required to have on escort drive equipment. So it's a generally pickup truck, flashing lights, flags, and they'll control traffic for a dangerous situation such as at an intersection or something like that, where, you know, people might not be aware that this is happening, they'll just stop traffic, control traffic. We talked to them about the intersection, they're using two escort drivers instead to stop traffic, even though generally all traffic needs to be stopped in the oncoming direction, because they're gonna be going into the oncoming lane, if cars were to go past them in the lane they had previously been in, then, you know, there's, they might not know what the truck is doing. So we wanted to have, like, have two escort drivers there to help stop traffic from both directions, even though they're transporting in one direction. We also planned to put, because the bridge is right there, we planned to put a signage at the top of the hill to say, hey, you know, it's a warning, hey, be prepared to stop, because we don't want somebody to pull over the hill and there's a truck, there's a truck turning, there's traffic backed up, and somebody doesn't know to stop. So, you know, we thought, we thought of that as well. We're also not moving during shift changes at Fasinal because of the number of cars. So we have an hour, we started off with an hour and hour and a half, no, hour fifteen minutes in the morning, and then an hour and a half in the evening time, there are two windows where we're not moving blades at all, to allow shift changes, you know, sort of, because that could be an issue with a lot of traffic, you know, try to avoid people getting delayed and also for safety. And so, you know, talking with Brian about that, you know, we agreed to those windows and with the idea that, you know, see how it goes, start off conservative, and then it's, hey, we only need 40 minutes, we only need an hour and a half, we can, we can pair it back if, if he approves it, so, or I guess you guys are comfortable with it, but, so that's, that's how we have it boarded right now.
Steve?
I appreciate you've got a pretty detailed plan to get them there. But as you said, you're not responsible for when they leave.
Right, so...
So we're at the mercy of whoever picks them up to take them?
So, so we did, you know, we have discussed in our contract, even though, even though it's not technically, we're not, we haven't been engaged to do it, we, our contract, or our agreement, which probably does cover the departure of the blades onto Pelzer, you know, making that right-hand turn so it gets the main road there. I don't know which way they go at that point, but I think they reverse their state permit at that point. So they have to get permitting from the state, they have to run route survey, they have to get all, you have to get approval. It's not just, it's not just wild west and they're gonna go.
Right, no, when they get on 61 and they're on highways after that, but I was...
And it was not, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Paul? Well, I just want to piggyback on that, because I think that if you're going up to the interstate, I mean, we have a turning problem from, from Pelzer onto 61, but more serious one from 61 onto 43.
Okay.
And so that's, so, I mean, those, that traffic disruption will be, I think, bigger, and that's why it would be interesting to know when they're gonna be going outbound and what's happening.
Yeah, and we need to, and that's, that's another part, actually, to further to your question about, you know, notification and everything, our contract act stipulates also that we need to notify, we need to notify everyone of, including EMS, schools, EMS, and, oh, Fasinal property, we, and any businesses on that road there, we need to notify them all when these, when these trains are coming in. So we have a master schedule. Right now, it's more tasks, you know, the river, and the river's lay open too, that's affecting our schedule. I'm sure there'll be other things that affect the schedule as the project goes on. All these, all these things are being constantly adjusted in our master, our master schedule, and so we're, we're planning to circulate that to all these parties. And the agreement states that you guys can furnish us with, you know, who, who does this need to go to? Who are the right people that this needs to go to? I mean, you know, Chief of Police, and there are a number of other individuals that were mentioned in there. So everybody knows what they, what they aim, and it's not surprising. And it's not gonna be every day. There will be, there will be gaps here and there. It just, I guess that's just on schedule. It's hard to dictate with the river being moving back at this point. We thought, we thought it would be right to open it by now, and, you know, hasn't, hasn't happened, so. We're looking at June right now.
George?
What's the weight of one of these blades?
So they weigh 39,000 and change, 39,000 pounds change, which is, it's actually, they're very large, they're 190 feet long, but they're not very, I think they're the same weight as a, as a standard truck load. So in terms of axle weights, they're, they're not heavy at all. There's no weight concern, it's purely the dimensions. So for, you know, for this agreement, a big part of the agreement was a damage mitigation plan with curving, because they have to cross the curving at one point. So, you know, we're gonna plate the curving, still place and street with the weight. We're depositing $30,000, you guys, in case there are damages, which we don't think there will be, but, you know, it's sort of, which makes you guys, you know, feel okay, but okay about it. Because like I said, the weight's, you know, not that heavy, they're just very large, which is certainly acceptable.
All right. Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Under new business, item 5.1, tax forfeited property at 1500 West Howard Street.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. None? Move to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.2 is a resolution to support low-income housing tax credits, an application to the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency.
I make a motion to approve the tax resolution. Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any discussion? Paul?
So I, the one question I have is in paragraph three of the summary, and it says the development would include units with rent and income restrictions for an extended period of time. So extended is, you know, whose definition of extended is? You know, the two years, eight years, 20 years?
The tax credit program requires a 30-year.
Good question.
Al? I just, for the record, I'd like to enter a resolution, or a letter, that I think we all received from Jim Burkota, who is the Chair of the Housing Task Force. I don't know if the city has the letter or not, but just submitting it as part of the minutes. Anyway, so it gets recorded. He was supportive, obviously, of this program. That's why I wanted to hold it.
Anything else? Let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.3 is a Winona Transit Routes redesign.
Make a motion to approve the route changes.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any questions? Paul?
Um, yeah, I'm, I'm still hopeful that sometime in the future, we can, we have a Mankato corridor, Broadway corridor. And I still feel like there is a chunk of, of, of Third Ward and part of Fourth Ward that seems to kind of be slightly left out, and that's between Franklin and Hamilton. And so maybe at some point, we can revisit that and see how we can maybe reach, reach that population of the community a little bit better. That's all.
Eileen?
Folks always can be encouraged to use Dial Ride.
I was just going to say, I appreciate the group that worked on this and all the community members that gave input. I think this is going to be great. Yes, I think there are parts in both ends of town where there isn't coverage, but we only have four buses, and the Dial Ride does cover anyone in those sections. And really, when you look at it, unless they're incapable of a little bit of ambulatory movement, they could get to a bus route pretty, pretty quickly. So I'm actually pleased, and I think this is going to deal with some of the congestion issues downtown with the buses, and then make it easier for everyone to figure out where they need to go and get them there quicker, which is ideal. So, good job, Monica. It's great.
Eileen?
Um, I just wanted to second what Ms. Shell said and thank the staff for all their work, and also that I'm really looking forward to seeing all of the lovely bus stops we're going to have with the cohesive design, so that everyone knows what they're for and where they can catch the bus. So, thank you for that.
Remind us how many new ones there will be?
We have funding in 2019 for up to, up to 15, and then we'll request additional funds in 2020.
Anything else? Vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious?
Item 5.4 is an approval to advertise for bids for the snow removal equipment building at the airport. So moved.
Second. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Al. We had 45 minutes in the pre-council about this, so we're pretty well up on this. Ready to vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious?
Item 5.5 is a state agreement for airport maintenance reimbursement. Make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious?
Item 5.6 is the 2019 Sidewalk Replacement Project City Manager's Recommendation.
Make a motion to approve the attached resolution. Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by everybody else. We'll give it to Al.
I didn't say anything.
He's actually the only one who's...
He's the only one who did. We'll give it to Eileen. Any questions? Comments?
I've got a quick question. I know that the property owners were notified that they could do the work or hire a contractor, but are they going to be notified right before construction begins, just so they know?
Yes.
Anything else? If not, let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious?
Item 5.7, the 2019 Sidewalk Replacement Project feasibility reports and resolution order and hearing for Monday, May 20th, and this is when we send notices to all the property owners.
I make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Questions? Michelle?
I'm really looking forward to seeing the alleyway version of this. Are we still working on that? And now, if Pam were here, she would ask, because we're starting in the west end, because we're in the east end for the sidewalks for the most part.
That will be a discussion for next year's budget.
Okay.
Just taking out this one.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious?
Item 5.8 is the Kachubian Capital Centennial Grant Request.
Well, I make a motion to adopt the attached resolution.
I'll second that.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by George. Discussion? Tim Breezy's here. Do you want to add anything, or? He's moving. I guess so.
No pressure.
No pressure. Tim Breezy, I'm president of the Polish Museum. I know everyone here at the Dais. And what we're proposing in 2020 is to have a year-long celebration, celebrating Polish heritage in Winona. The whole event is to increase awareness of our heritage here. And the population of Winona once was almost 30%. And it's being diluted now. You can kind of suspect that happens with some of the good-looking ladies that are in town. The guys get married often. There's only half as many of us, which are purebreds, if you will. George, there's another one over there. But we've been working on putting together a grant for a couple of major events. One would be the Schmazniapka event. It's the tasty apple festival. You're familiar with that, because we've had that in previous years. Many of you have attended, and thank you for that. The other one is kind of a new one that we're proposing, and it's called Yeni Kohani Festival. And that's the Kachubian term, Yeni Kohani. It means, oh my gosh, or oh dear me, an oh dear me festival, a polka festival. We're going to have that, plus many other side events, talking about bringing in people to help research genealogy from the perspective of people from Eastern Europe looking inwards to Winona and vice versa, Winona people looking to Eastern European for their roots. There's other items that are involved in that grant request. To help bring credence and credibility to all of this, we are expecting in October of next year to have Polish officials coming. We would expect one of their federal senators to be in attendance, their president of their senate to be in attendance. This is at the federal level. At the voicemail or state level, we expect administrators to be here, along with the officials from our sister city, Bitov. All those people will be here to help celebrate Winona's heritage. We are also committed to going to Bitov, our sister city, in May, and is coming here, and helping them celebrate the Kachubian centennial. A quick bit of history. Poland had its history in 1918, after World War II. Poland became a nation. Pomerania, or the Kachubian area where we come from, didn't celebrate theirs until 1920, which would be next year's centennial. So that is what we're going to celebrate over there, and they're going to help us celebrate over here. And we would hope that you would look favorably on putting this grant request in. It is essential to carry out these activities that we're planning in. I might add, this is a, the activities are going to be multi-agency, if you will. We're going to have the Polish Museum, Winona State University, and thank you, City of Winona, to all be partners in this, and have a truly a citywide event. And I'll stand for any questions that you have.
Any questions for Tim? Very exciting. You certainly have a full calendar of events planned, and I think I speak for everybody in wishing you success with this grant application.
Jan Krya, that's Polish. Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
If we're ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious?
Item 5.9 is the longest-day event at Levin Park on June 21st. Make a motion to approve this request.
Second.
Good. Motion by Michelle, seconded by Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious?
Item 5.10 is the Bluff Traverse Trail System land purchase of a parcel on Heights Boulevard.
Move to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Al, and seconded by Michelle. Discussion? Paul?
Uh, we have separate, separate resolutions for each piece of land.
Anything further? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious?
Item 5.11 is the Bluff Traverse Trail System land purchase of 1292 Windcrest Drive. Make a motion to approve that purchase.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, and seconded by Paul. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious?
Item 7.1 is council concerns.
Start with George.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there any way that the walls can be washed up in the Masonic Theater area? I know there's been a lot of construction up there, and...
Well, they were filthy before that, too.
Yeah, they were, yeah, they were filthy before that, too, and...
That's the restorer.
I think she gave us a price.
She gave us a quote, yeah.
Uh, Mayor and Council, we did receive an estimate to do that work with the drop restorer. The individual who's working on the drops came in approximately like $6,000. It's not within the drop restoration budget that we had, and so we were, we've been holding off doing that activity. Wabashaw construction, as part of the current project, was required to do a section of the walls as part of the project, but there is a significant section of, I guess, of the building or that area that is still, um, dirty, I guess, to use the word.
Margaret Johnson's play is going to be, the proceeds are to be given to the city. Are they designated for a specific project?
Uh, Mayor and Council, she did not, Margaret Shaw Johnson did not designate specifically. She said that she would like it to go toward the restoration of the Masonic Temple. We certainly could ask her if she'd like the proceeds to go to that activity. But to that point, prior to, prior to the play, it's unlikely that they'll be washed. Actually, I'd probably say it's not going to happen, just because of the timeframe for the restorer.
But would we be washing them in the future? So I think, you know, investing all that money up there, I think, washing the walls, I think, is one of the...
It'll definitely be part of the project.
Okay.
Yeah, Mayor and Council, right, exactly. I would say 100%. It's just a matter of time. The other issue with it is, there's, there's a difference between cleaning the walls, and then we've got some of the stenciling or the artwork on the walls. It takes a little bit, you know, a little bit more delicate handling. And so it's certainly something that, again, 100% needs to be done.
Okay, so we both plan on bringing something as far as cleaning the walls, so. Okay, thank you. And just like to thank everyone who showed up Saturday night for my celebration of Person of the Year, or Polish Person of the Year at the Polish Museum, and a big thanks to Tim Breeza, who puts that event together every year. So, good job, Tim, and, yeah, Jane Kui, so. It's not Bozopots, it's Jane Kui. So, anyway, thank you, everyone. So, thank you very much.
Paul?
Thank you. Um, so a couple of things. I just want to remind everyone about Bike Month activities. You can go to the Livwell Winona website and see a full calendar. There are a lot of activities going on. There's an activity called Tour to Water on the 18th. I want to encourage people to participate in. It's Winona's Urban Bike Ride. That's on the 18th. Also want to remind people that, since we're talking about the Masonic, that the 16th through the 18th will be the premiere of Mr. James and Mr. Jeff, written by Margaret Shaw Johnson. And, and I would encourage people to attend one of those showings, on one of those three nights. It'll be an opportunity to see some of the drops, because I, I have heard that they are promised to be, be used during the performance. And that's it. Thank you.
Michelle? Eileen?
Uh, well, that was on my list, to encourage folks to go see Mr. James and Mr. Jeff, and that it's, you know, about a really unique part of our history, and we'll have the drops. And also wanted to thank everyone at Midwest Music Fest for a very successful weekend. I think it was the best weather we've ever had. I actually wanted to go out and do stuff. And just wanted to mention that I had a volunteer shift at the Masonic and was standing in the hallway while, checking wristbands, and I heard so many people from out of town say that that was their favorite venue and how cool it was, and that they would want to see more shows there. So I thought that was very encouraging, and it was great to be able to welcome people there. So, thanks.
All right, thank you, Al. Uh, thank you. Congratulations to the graduates of Winona State and St. Mary's. Their ceremonies, commencement ceremonies will be this weekend. And also, you know, I was going to mention this, but as we had it on our agenda, we can now add windmill blades to the commodities that are shipped from or out of or into the Winona port. I mean, we have silvers grain, we have, you know, corn and beans and stuff, and now windmill blades. I think that's a real coup. So, thanks to Central Oceans for using our port for this object and process. Also, a group of citizens in mainly the Knott Valley area recently saw that the flagpole that was placed in the entrance to Knott Valley, over the years, has deteriorated a little bit. And with the leadership of Knott Valley resident Jerry Abiglio, who organized everything, those citizens got together, raised funds, and now we'll be replacing that flagpole. I talked to Jerry today, and he said that the funds are raised, the flagpole is on order. They anticipate having the flagpole installed by Memorial Day, weather permitting. So it'll be a nice addition to that particular part of our community. And I think, once it is installed, that the city might want to send them, I don't know who you'd send it to, maybe Jerry, to extend the other people a nice thank you note for their actual efforts, because it wasn't without a little expense. It was a big expense, and then there's volunteer labor as well. So they did a nice job. Thanks to the folks in Knott Valley for spiffing up their neighborhood. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Under the consent agenda, there are three items: approval of the minutes from April 15th, the final adoption of an ordinance to establish Wabashaw as the through highway from Hamilton to Mankato, and the final adoption of an ordinance to amend the composition of the Human Rights Commission.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Al, and seconded by Michelle. Paul?
So I'm, I'm fine with all of this. The only thing that, I'm wondering if we can change the terminology of through highway? Because we're talking about a city street that is, if I remember correctly, going to be a bike boulevard or... And, and, I mean, we're kind of using a term that most citizens out there think of as, well, it's a highway, now it's going to be a through highway. And with highways, we have 55 mile an hour speed limits and so on and so forth. Is there a way, or do we have to use that term?
We'll talk to our attorney's office and have them check it.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Anything else? Vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Curious?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
Motion is second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Make sure we don't change the interstate.